I'd like to call the town hall meeting to order tonight. I'm glad to see, I'd like to welcome everybody here and glad to see that it's well attended. We'd like to start with our invocation by Commissioner Larry Harvey and the pledge allegiance by Commissioner Bill Pickens. Please stand if you can.
Let's bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for a marvelous day, a day of opportunity for Putnam County, that this board and our fellow staff members can listen to the concerns of the citizens and, Father, we can help and try to do something about the concerns that are placed here tonight. We ask, Lord, that everything be done in decency and in order and, Father, that we'll be attentive to that. And, Father, we just thank you for every good thing that you have so upon us this new year in 2020. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounds great.
Okay, I'd like to start with, it's not necessary that you fill out one of these, but we would appreciate it if you do, if you decide you want to speak tonight. The cards are in the back and you can turn them in to Sarah over here on my left, your right. To start, before we go into a public comment tonight, I would like to ask Deputy Administrator Matt Reynolds to give us a presentation on the fire and where we are on it in light of what's taking place this week on social media. So, I'm going to turn this over to Matt for a quick presentation before we get started.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went through and gathered up some data and just made some notes on fire and emergency medical services in the county. So, I'll just try to read through a couple of my notes I have here. Just as a background information, Putnam County Fire Rescue is, at least on the financial side, it's currently split into two different departments. One for fire protection and the other for emergency medical services. A lot of people think those two are one and the same, but at this point in time, there's a little bit of difference between those two departments. Fire protection is funded via the municipal service tax unit, which is the 1.1 mils that you'll see on your annual tax bill. The emergency medical services department is funded from the county's general fund via ad valorem taxes and other non-ad valorem taxes such as the charges for when somebody actually has to use an ambulance. So, it's two different, two different funding sources. It's really, historically, it's been two different kinds of departments and I'll talk a little bit more about what administration and the county commission is going to be looking at in the near future as to reorganization and restructure to hopefully make that a little smoother. There's currently 14 positions open within the emergency medical services department and two within the fire department. Since January 1st of 18, the county has realized a net decrease of only three total employees within those two departments. County administration is well aware of the continued issue of vacant positions within those departments, but from the numbers that I've seen, it looks like this has been a continuing issue for years now and has become a much greater issue that current administration and the current county commissioners are now going to have to, to have to put some measures in place to try to rectify it. Some things that we have done so far is double overtime for any employee of either fire or emergency medical services who volunteers to work on an open shift. In November, county staff requested approval from the board for any employee who volunteers to work on an open position to get their overtime at double time instead of just time and a half. That was approved by the board. However, the employees of both fire and emergency medical services are members of a union. And in order to implement something like that, it has to be collectively bargained between the county and the collective bargaining group, which is the union. So, even though the county commissioners approved it, we cannot put that in place until the union accepts that. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. Pay raises. County administration as well as the county commission were in agreement when we were preparing the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget, which just began on October 1st. Fortunately, we were able to include raises for county staff in the budget that was adopted and they were set to take place on October 6th. However, for employees that are members of a union, again, budgeted raises have to be collectively bargained with the union. Union negotiations had been ongoing well before the adoption of the budget. And a meeting was scheduled on November 5th in an attempt to finalize a tentative agreement, which could be voted on by the union membership. That agreement included their proposed raise. We wanted to try to get that in place as soon as possible. After the meeting on November 5th, both county administration and union representation, at least from what I could tell, felt that a tentative agreement was ready to be presented to the union membership once a few changes had been made to that tentative agreement. The agreement was revised and emailed on November 18th to the union president. The tentative agreement was rejected by the union membership and the county was notified on November 22nd. Once we received notification that the agreement had been rejected, we set another meeting with the union on December 5th. At this meeting, it was apparent that more negotiations were going to be needed on multiple different articles of the collective bargaining agreement, not just pay. So, what county administration moved forward with was attempting to get a memorandum of agreement or a memorandum of understanding executed with the union so that we could implement both the double overtime and the pay raises with them as soon as we could. We reached out to the union. We were notified on December 14th by union legal representation that an MOU was not possible. We requested our legal representation reach out to the union legal representation and apparently they worked that out. On December 18th, the union president notified county administration that he had reached out to the Public Employees Relation Commission and they informed him that it was possible to do an MOU. So, on that same, that same day, December, on December 23rd or on December 18th, we sent a draft MOU to the union president and on December 23rd, the MOU was accepted and executed by the union and the county for the non-officers bargaining unit. So, pay raises and double overtime is in place as of December 24, December 23rd for the non-officers. The officers bargaining unit rejected their MOU. So, we're going to have some more negotiations to do on that. On December 19th, the county administrator, chief Romey, and battalion chief Flato attended paramedic school graduation at First Coast Technical College where they met with graduates and families to disseminate information and to try to encourage recent paramedic graduates to apply to Putnam County. As of the meeting tonight, we've gotten word that one of those graduates applied and is going to be hired for employment here at Putnam County and we've received one other application from a graduate of that. So, that is good news. Also, within the last 12 months, the county has participated in two separate career source grant programs, which they are paying for current employees of Putnam County that are EMTs to go back to school and get their paramedic certification at no cost to the employees. We've gotten two, two separate grants with two employees on each. Unfortunately, on the second grant, only one employee followed through. Also, administration has been working on, looking at a plan to restructure the fire and rescue departments into a single department that it's truly a fire rescue department. Right now, it's, there's, there's some separation between the two and in discussions that we've had with union representations, we're hearing the same thing from them as well. So, that is something that we're going to be looking at doing in the near future and going to this structure would also provide additional incentives for employees such as, once they get hazard materials handling certification, that could be an incentive. Fire instructor could be an incentive. If they get their paramedic certification, that could be an incentive. We're looking at the structure of several counties that surround us and they have a similar structure and that is what we are going to be, I'm still working on that. I'm going to be trying to bring that to union representation, talking with them about it, as well as the board in the very near future. That's all I have to mention, sir.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. We're going to start public comment, but before we do, I'm going to give the commissioners the opportunity, if they wish to speak about anything at this point. If not, we'll move straight into public comment. I don't see any yet, so, okay, we'll move into public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit to three minutes. I'd also like to request that, that all comments be directed to the chair. I'd like to not have debates over issues tonight if possible, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does that mean that we can't have direct dialogue with the individuals at the podium?
No, sure, that doesn't mean that at all, if you wish to have dialogue, but I would appreciate it if we could, if there's an issue that multiple people are going to speak on, that we let those people speak and then direct, and then talk to them as a group instead of each particular one or we'll be here until midnight and so... And we also are going to have a round of commissioner comments at the end. If you'd like to address any particular issue during the thing, you can do it also at the end, your prerogative. Okay? Okay. With that being said, our first speaker I'm going to call is Karen Chadwick.
Thank you for having this meeting on 179 West Strickland Road, Interlochen. I just wanted, the last commissioners meeting, I brought up the drawdown and I just wanted to mention that again. I've been going out, I could do a trip every day right now if I could, but I can't because I got other stuff to do. But people are coming from all over to go out there and see the birds. The springs are kind of browned out now because they let a lot of water out of moss bluff, so it's kind of flooding the southern springs. But there's a lot of people going out there and I see the bass guides out there and we're coming back in right about the same time. And I was thinking yesterday, you know, the guys are, the guides are out there fishing, the people are out there fishing, the nature-based tour operators, we're out there, we're slammed. You know, why can't we have both? You know, that would, when the water comes back up, we're, we're shut down, we're done. None of our, our people want to go out there. There's just really not anything to see, you know, to photograph. So, I just, you know, the county's always looking for more ways to make money and it's, if you talk to the people that are doing these tours, like myself, and, you know, I can give you some names of some other people, it really, it's night and day when that waters up financially, when the water's up and the water's down. So, I've got these cards I want to give you. This is a state park and the state parks are supposed to be managed for the health and the, you know, the benefit of the natural systems for a state park. And this is, this is right out from Kenwood and this is what our state park looks like right now. And this could grow back. There's other areas where the trees, where the ground does get exposed and the trees are able to, to grow back. I just think it's, it's a huge benefit and I hope at some point, some of you will take a look at this, the, you know, the economic benefit. There's a lot of people that support restoration and it's not like fishing will end. People are fishing like crazy out there. We had a, we were in the Melrose Parade and we had, we won best overall for the, our float, you know, we're stretched out pretty long and people were chanting from the side, "Free the Aklewaha." There's a lot of support for that. It's only been there 50 years, you know, it was there a long time and, you know, the Aklewaha was a, a major factor for bringing tourism dollars to Putnam County and Palaca. And I think we could have it back and, I mean, we're sitting on a, a golden egg here and please think about it, take a look at it. You know, we have a chance, March 1st, the water's supposed to come back up and then, you know, we're done, we're shut down till the next drawdown. So, I'd like to give these cards to you. Do I give them to you or can I just hand them to you?
Give them to Sarah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chadwick. The next speaker would be Joseph Wright. Mr. Wright, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. It's Joseph Wright, 172 Fulton Road, Umen Barden. And I want to talk about the, the bridge issue that we're having and it's down to four tons. There are definitely some safety issues. It's been a problem with school buses. I've seen the garbage trucks still using it. For a while there, state police were out there writing tickets. I know that there are several contractors that live on the other side of the bridge. There was also some incentive for business to come out here through the mayor several years ago and I know that some of the businesses here, their families are directly affected by this bridge issue. And I don't know exactly where it's at right now, but I can tell you that during the Superbowl, there were temporary bridges put up in Jacksonville that went up fairly quickly. I don't know if you have any cost estimates at this time. I do this for a living, so construction background is very high on my level as far as knowledge. So, my biggest concern was the safety factor with fire and rescue. I have seen the ambulance come over. I know that there was a split where fire trucks and emergency medical services were put on the other side of the bridge, but you still run into the issue of trying to get out where a stroke or a heart attack victim, minutes make a difference. And if you've got to go 40 minutes around, you know, there's a big problem that I think that the liability issue could be a factor. So, there are some temporary repairs that could be done, even if it was a one-lane bridge while the other one was being constructed. Or there are some ways you could support the bridge with I-beams and put in new pilings. So, I know that there was some discussion on rebuilding the bridge with metal pilings, which is a good idea for a long-term repair, but at least for a temporary repair, there appears to be enough right-of-way off to the side where, again, like I've said, I've seen temporary bridges go in in a very short amount of time. Even if it had to be a one-lane bridge, traffic light could be put up for traffic one way or the other and that would resolve a lot of the problems that, that we're seeing in Barden anyway. And I think that if it's closed, there was some talk about it being closed for up to a year, that would be a big problem. And, and I think as far as being a contractor myself, that that is not a realistic timeframe. So, maybe some requests for proposal. I don't know if any estimates or cost takeoffs have been done, but the market is pretty strong and there's a lot of contractors here locally that I'm sure would be very interested in getting this matter resolved. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Wright, we're going to have a Barden Bridge update at the end of the meeting under commissioner comments. We had planned to do that tonight. We have some new information that just came out to light in the last few days, so we're going to bring it up.
Mr. Chairman, I thought... Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir.
Would you be willing to, to attend transportation meetings and help us with this if we...
Sure, sure. I've done it. I was a JEA inspector. I was the inspector during the Superbowl, so I've seen it. I do multimillion-dollar projects and I do the cost estimates and constructability reviews, so yes.
I think at this point, any, any useful information we can get would be helpful.
And like I said, I've got several local contractors, some that live out in Barden. There's a lot of talent here in Putnam County and I think we're all tired of traveling to Jacksonville and every place else with the, the growth that's happening here, that there's a lot of talented people and good companies that, that live and work here.
Mr. Wright, after we do the update, if you can stick around, after we do the update and the meeting, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. We have a lot of information and I have been talking to a lot of the residents out in Barden about this as we've gone along because every, it seems like every time we come up with a solution, we can't just go do it. We have to have engineer approval because this is the government. We can't get engineers to go along with all the different plans and we've come up with a boatload of them and so...
Yeah, St. John's Water Management's going to be a big one because you've got a waterway that you're crossing and, but I think with the emergency situation, there was also something, I know that the bridge was mainly damaged during the hurricane and I don't know if it's too late for any femur assistance or it was put in for femur assistance, but I know that there was some repairs done and I'm, I'm a little surprised that it wasn't identified back then before the extra money was spent.
There's 10 feet of scouring. It didn't happen in one event. It's, it's been happening over time.
Yeah. Well, I've got some video of when it happened and it washed out the outside of the bridge and you could actually see the, the 12-by-12 wood supports where it goes from a bridge to land. So, I didn't know if they grout-injected that section. I saw riprap and then I saw fences and...
Yeah, they grouted both of them.
They grouted, yeah. So, it was only temporary, but it looked like in the bottom of the base of the pilings, it was pretty wore out, so...
That's not really the issue at this point is the scouring. It's not even the scalding issue, it's the scouring issue down at the bottom.
Corrosion of the metal, yeah.
That's the reason they dropped the weight on the bridge.
You've lost 10 feet of soil.
Yeah, wash out on top of it, yeah.
You have 10 feet of scouring and with 30, 30-foot embedment.
I think the first thing is some core samples and see what you can do if it's even, you know, how deep you're going to have to go or relocate it. There seems to be enough room to divert the road with what looks to be the right-of-way with the telephone poles.
They have done the core samples there now. You want to just go ahead and get into this and...
Sure, if you'd like for me to do that.
Well, I'll go ahead and do it that way. This is your only issue. You won't have to wait till the end of the meeting if the commissioners don't mind that I go ahead and address this.
Thank you.
Just within the last day or two, DOT has sent us a funding agreement. The commissioners don't even know about it yet because I'm not allowed to talk to them except in an open meeting like this. But the funding agreement, if it's, has been sent to our attorney for approval, if he approves it on, by tomorrow or gives us a go-ahead, I'm going to call a special meeting on Tuesday to discuss the funding agreement and if we can move forward with the engineering on the bridge to get it started. We have come up with multiple fixes over the, over the last several months, but every, every one we come up with, we're shot down by an engineer saying, "We can't do that." I mean, we just, we were trying to just come up with a, a solution that would allow us to stabilize the, the current bridge enough to where we could raise the weight limit just to the point where we could get school buses and ambulances across it in one-lane traffic. We couldn't get an engineer to go along with us and I'm a contractor too. And it makes complete sense to me that if you put a beam on each side of the bridge and build a bridging superstructure on top of it, that it's going to run I-beams or trusses underneath, that it's going to stabilize the bridge. You probably agree with me on that. Couldn't get an engineer that would sign off on it. So, that's why we are where we are. So, building another one to go around the side of it, we talked about it right up front. But in order to do that, it was going to take as long and cost almost as much as just to go on and build the bridge. So, anybody that has a recommendation, I'm open and I'm sure Commissioner Rawls and Goddard are open because it's, their district is on each side of that bridge. So, excuse me. I'm sure they're open also to any suggestions, but I don't know of anything in this county that, that'll take precedence over trying to get that bridge open. And that's why we came up with the quickest way that we could figure out how to do it was to build half a bridge, brand-new, and then tear down the, the other bridge and use portions of it to help build the second half of the bridge. That's the quickest way that we could do it. And DOT is going to let us use the, the money that they were going to give us to pave Holloway Grade Road, Holloway Road, and use that money to, to do this bridge. And that's up to, help me, Commissioner Harv, 4.8 million?
Yeah.
Up to $4.8 million to do this bridge and the bridge out on 310. Excuse me again. So, hopefully we can get that, we've been waiting on that funding agreement because they told us if we did not, if we started the engineering or started this bridge building before we had a funding agreement, then they were out. So, that's what we're waiting on and, and that's how we're going to move forward. And if the, the attorney gives us the nod, we're going, I'm going to call a special meeting for Tuesday morning to okay that funding agreement and get us started on a path to getting that new bridge put in.
Mr. Chair, I did review that agreement and I approve it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commandant.
Is there a special meeting Tuesday morning?
Yes, so, yeah. Bill, is 9 o'clock okay with you? Okay with you, Commissioner Rawls, Commissioner Goddard? 9 o'clock Tuesday morning, good?
On February 7th?
Yes. So, we're going to set a, we just set a special meeting that, to be advertised for 9 o'clock Tuesday morning and we're going to talk about the funding agreement and hopefully we'll be prepared at that point to also move forward with trying to get engineers on board and one engineer for sure gave us, made us a commitment. I don't know if he's the one, they're the ones we're going to use or not, but they made us a commitment that they would design this bridge in three months. Now, if you're in the business, you know that's a big deal because usually an architect takes a year and they want us to bid it in three days and build it in two weeks. So, you know, I mean, you know how it is. So, hope, that's a big deal, so...
Is that going to be in the little room?
Well...
Suite 200?
You, you want to do it over there in the, the smaller room?
Wherever you'd like, Mr. Chairman. We can do it in either room.
We'll try for the smaller room and if we fill it up, we'll move it over to this room. How's that?
Can you make that, Joe?
I'll, I'll...
Suite 200, right next door.
That, that's about, that's basically where we are on the Barden Bridge and this is brand-new information. It came in within the last few days. Having a special, Joe, having a special meeting will allow us to move it up in the schedule three full weeks if we took it to transportation, which is where this would usually go to, would be three weeks after Tuesday. So, we're going to, that will at least save us three weeks right off the get-go, so...
You didn't just take a week that long to get, get them in there?
Right. Well, we're hoping, I don't know if we've got to bid out the engineering or continuing services. We've got to wait until Monday for our general services director to return and let us know which way we need to go. So, hopefully by Tuesday, we can also get that process started, whichever way she advises is in, is directed by the current purchasing ordinance. So, thank you. Next speaker would be Kate Gallagher. And Ms. Gallagher, if you would give us your address for the record, please, ma'am.
Gladly. Kate Gallagher, 1434 Baden Powell Road, Hawthorne, Florida. Fifth-generation Floridian who has been having a grand time out on the Aklewaha with the drawdown. It is such a treasure and I've been running into people all over Florida, all over the South who are like, "Wow, what do we have to do to keep this going?" There's critters everywhere, there's birds that make all those nerdy bird watchers just go nuts. The springs are visible, people are swimming in the springs, they're spending money and we say like, "Why can't we have this? This is just such a treasure." And obviously, it's the state plan. It's the state plan to partially breach the dam. Try and figure out what's stopping that and what I keep hearing is the county commissioners. So, I want you all, I invite every one of you, I'll take you out on the water, I'll feed you lunch, but this is a treasure and why you would have your boot throttling this beautiful treasure. We have the St. Johns, we have the Aklewaha, we've got people who want to be there. Eco-tourism is happening. So, who wants to go paddling with me? No, seriously, if you saw the birds and the critters and just the people that are fishing on the banks, there's plenty of fish for everybody. I would love to take any of y'all out, please. What we need, there's, you know, there's all kinds of crazy things being said, "Oh, my leg's going down because of the drawdown." That's just not true. There's, and I'm sure my side has all kinds of crazy ideas. So, what I'm asking you to do is let's have a summit. Let's sit down, figure out what the facts are. There's all kinds of research talking about how much more money we have during the drawdown, how much more money we get from eco-tourism. This really is a golden egg. Can we have a summit? Sit down with facts and try and figure out how to help our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Next speaker, Pam Olson.
Can I just say that with as many people in here, I would expect the body heat would have been a little bit warmer. It is freezing in here again. Gosh, can y'all turn the body heat up?
Would you give us your address for the record, Ms. Olson?
Yes, I'm at 292 Maxwell Drive in Malaka. I came to Putnam County about three years ago. I'm a businesswoman entrepreneur. I come from Orlando area and I wanted to come to a more rural setback area. I was in the Wakiva Protection Area and had a house there for 20 years and now it's, I've got an eight-lane highway going in. So, my five-year plan was to move here and be situated here. in. So my five-year plan was to move here and be situated here. So I bought some property in Malacca. I have, uh, a couple of lots there on a canal and I had nothing but problems for three solid years. Um, I have encountered things that I couldn't even, I, I've told the people, but it's just not been right. And, um, I see that, uh, you know, I'm just encountering people that don't wanna offer solutions for problems, but they want to find ways to just point fingers and blame game, which is two enemies of teamwork. Um, I'm all about finding solutions for problems. Um, right now, uh, you know, I'm paying, my taxes is going up and up and up. So I had the assessor out there today and I'm like, "What's going on?" I said, "I don't mind paying higher taxes, but my roads are falling apart. We're, I'm going from pavement to dirt." And I've been complaining about that for two years and emails and pictures. Took two years to fix a hole. Um, now, I have, uh, I stand in my shower and I can't even get the cream rinse out of my hair because I have pressure on my, water pressure is less than twenty pounds. At one point, the DEP said, "You only have seven pounds of pressure." The other day, my husband tests the water. That's what he does for a living in Orlando with inspectors. And he's done that for forty years. So he tested the water and it was red. It has so much chlorine in it, um, that you don't wanna drink it. I don't even wanna bathe in it, you know? And, you know, that's defacing the value of my property, you know? So, and plus, the ditches need to be cleaned out. They've been neglected. They have not been cleaned out. If we have a hurricane or we have, we need to be proactive in, in leadership. And I just think that it's time to roll up our sleeves and really implement volunteers, do something. You've got this gentleman right here. Like he said, we've got lots of talent here. People are coming here. I'm investing here. I don't wanna sit here and go, "Do I really wanna invest any more money in this county?" Or do I just wanna leave and go somewhere else? Because a lot of people are saying that.
Are you in the town of Malacca?
Yes. And so there are inter-local agreements. I have read them. There is statutes that require the county to work with the, the municipalities. And that should be happening. Uh, we have to work together to make things better and find solutions for, for people. So there's people in Malacca that are left out. They're in the county. We're in the, we have a Sportsman Harbor that's part in the county, part in the city. It's a mess. It's a puzzle. And there's, you know, we don't really have an active HOA, but I think we should have one because you're making a lot of money off of that and the ad valorem taxes is nothing. So we're not fixing our roads. The, the, the storm drainage pipes are all rotted and falling apart. And people are buying five, four, five-hundred-thousand-dollar homes. You know, they're, they're going up and up and up. And I'm thinking, we have, they haven't experienced a hurricane yet and how it floods.
I'm, I'm not sure if that's our responsibility at this point.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Commissioner Rawls, uh, Ms. Olson and I have had a number of conversations. I've been out to her house. Um, that particular road that she lives on is, is not a county-maintained road. That would be a, a, a commitment from the town of Malacca. I would think that your water service is from the town of Malacca. Um, so the county is, is providing what I feel we are obligated to, um, to provide. And I told you, I said, "I wished we could resurface that road," but it's not a county, it's not a county road.
Well, then, then the residents and I have gotten together and we're gonna privatize it. And we're not gonna let anybody drive on it. So, that's fine. If we're gonna do that, we're gonna put up signs and we're just not, we're gonna have no through road, you know? Because if the county's not going to abide by Florida statutes that I've clearly laid out to about, you know, Interlocal Agreements Act of nineteen-sixty-nine, these, these things make the county and the towns work together so that you can find solutions because I'm not paying my taxes to Malacca directly. I'm paying them to the county. And Malacca only gets two, gets a minute amount of money. And they can't possibly maintain all the infrastructure with that little bit of money. There's no way. And me reading all the interlocal agreements and all the Florida statutes that require interlocal powers to be, uh, uh, work together between the county and, and small towns, you know, I'm reading something different in my Florida statutes and in my, uh, Florida Constitution.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Administrator Suggs has promised me this year, we have three townships in, uh, in, in my district, District One, that we're gonna review all the interlocal agreements. Um, but I'll just make a comment that, like I said, I wish we could fix this road. And I don't know about your ad valorem taxes, but mine didn't go up any. Not on my house. It's homesteaded and it was the same as it was because we did not raise the military. Is that correct, gentlemen? So I don't know how it could...
It, it could go up because of value, though.
I don't know how it could go up. It couldn't, it couldn't go up much. Plus, also, your, your road maintenance and the majority of public works funding comes from gas taxes. Is that not correct? Not the ad valorem taxes. So we understand that you pay and we appreciate that. And we all pay taxes up here also. But Ms. Olson, we've had this conversation a number of times. And I wish we could put that road on the, the, um, the resurfacing list, but we can't because it's not a county-maintained road.
Well, there's just, there's a lot more roads in there that are county-maintained that are pretty bad, too. So, I mean...
Okay, if you bring those to my attention, then I'll get with Public Works and we'll put those on the list.
I just, you know, I have one more thing. I thought maybe you all might want, want a copy of this.
Ms. Olson, I appreciate it, but you, three minutes, I'll let you go double.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted you to have this.
Okay, if you give it to Sarah there.
Can I ask a question real quick? Legally speaking, do we have an obligation to oversee, um, the municipality if, if the residents are complaining about not getting services that they think they're paying for? Do we have any kind of obligation to step in and oversee that in any way? Or are we?
No, not only is there not an obligation, there's not an ability to once somebody's...
Then once they charter, we're...
Could you speak into the microphone a little louder? I want, I want everybody, I want her to hear that.
Ms. Olson, so what he's saying is that under your charter, you, you guys are autonomous. The, the town of Malacca would either have to, um, give up their charter and go back into the county, or you, or you guys need to take this up with your elected officials?
Ms. Olson, if you're gonna have, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to walk back up to the microphone. We're recording the meeting.
I just went through Florida Statute one-twenty-five-oh-one, and it talks about interlocal agreements and it talks about, uh, the structures applying and powers and controls that the county commissioners have over municipalities. That's, that's directly from the Florida statute, uh, which entitled the citizens of Putnam County, uh, to infrastructure, uh, maintenance and improvements, uh, when it comes to public safety, welfare, and the property owners. You know, so there are, there are, I, I highlighted areas in this, uh, statute, um, under one-twenty-five-oh-one here in, uh, Section Q, um, one-Q. And it also talks about, and you can read these. I mean, I don't wanna go all into them. But it's, it's basically telling you, "The governing body of such special districts shall be composed of county commissioners and may include elected officials of the government body." And it talks about the boundaries and it talks about the interlocal agreements. And it talks about, you know, uh, the municipalities and the counties, how their role plays together because they're collecting taxes and they're providing services. The county is also providing services inside of the city, too. So, these statutes, to me, are clear.
I don't think we have a dog in that fight, to be honest with you. The, the water utility, the sewer utility, that's, that, that all belongs to you guys in Malacca. So you'd have to take that up with the local officials down there.
Well, that, that much I know, you know. I know that, but I'm talking about the storm, you know, you know, there, there's right-of-ways and storm drains and, you know, there's a lot of, there's too much, you know, of, "It's their fault." No, it's their fault. And we just, the people in, in Sportsman Harbor are stuck in the middle, is what's going on. And there's a lot of frustration. I sit on the board of the HOA. And it's a social club right now, but I think it should be a real HOA.
Thank you.
That's gonna be my, my, my mission for 2020.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Um, next speaker, Craig McLean.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's, uh, good to be with you. First, I want to thank you for...
Craig, would you give us your address for the record, please?
All that good stuff. Uh, one-twenty Roberts Lane, Craig McLean, Palaca, Florida. Uh, first, thank you for holding this town meeting. I think it's a good opportunity for citizens to share some ideas and have conversation with the commissioners on a variety of subjects. So thank you for that. Um, thank you for your leadership on trail development. I've always encouraged the commission over the years and, um, acknowledged that. I truly do appreciate the continu, uh, continuous leadership there. Uh, recently, you spent quite a bit of time with me and others. Uh, we do appreciate that, uh, continued support on trail development, especially the extension, um, of the maintenance and the application for some additional, um, funding, uh, for some assessments and also for some construction. Um, I'm gonna limit my comments tonight because we, I have a lot of updates, but, um, I don't think we have time for a lot of that. But first, um, with the county's agreement to maintain the Palaca Gap, as I call it, from the Water Maintenance District to the Italian-Latin Grill. It's the last two-point-seven-five miles of the, uh, the rail trail that comes through, um, the old, um, Georgia-Florence Southern Line. It connects to the Florida East Coast Railway Line in, uh, East Palaca. Um, with that, I asked the commission to join me, um, in working with Representative Bobby Payne to establish an initiative. Um, we've requested the funding for construction of that section. Um, I'd like to work with you and Bobby Payne to do, put in a kind of an accelerator on that, see if we can get something moving a little faster than the normal, um, pathway that we do with those types of projects. Also, um, at some of our recent meetings, some of the things I wanted to touch based on, we ran short on time. So a couple of other things, update-wise. A couple of years ago, um, Putnam Blue Ways and Trails, um, Citizen Support Organization worked hard on a wayfinding plan. We had a good, solid draft of that with, that we have our logo, which you've all have seen that logo. With that, there's a concept on how to do wayfinding, how to market the trail system, how to, you know, bring more visitors in to use our trails, help our economy, those types of things. That's something this year that I think we need to have a, some focused work on to accelerate that work. Um, also on the St. John's River to Sea Loop, uh, Trail, which is a two-hundred-sixty-mile, um, cycling trail that's being built, um, from Titusville up to St. Augustine, back over to Palaca, back down to the land, uh, De Berry, and then connects back up to the coast. That's why, you know, named St. John's River to Sea Loop. Um, that work is continuing. We appreciate the, um, the request that the county's made to DOT to fund that assessment from East Palaca down to the Volusia County Line. That's sixteen miles that we agreed on there. So, um, appreciate that word. Just let you know, we'll keep that moving forward. And then, kind of in closing, I think, um, it's important, there's a lot of excitement at the visioning sessions that were held in the three places throughout the county. Uh, trails, outdoor, ecotourism was kind of high-ranked ideas. A lot of people shared the importance of that to the county. So I think that's gonna be real important to blend into the strategic plan as you finish polishing that. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you for your diligent work, sir. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak? I'm out of speaker cards. Okay, you can, you can just come right on up, sir. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Scott Hayes, one-six-nine R. N. R. Ranch Road. I wanted to say, uh, with the problem with the bridge, we have large trucks coming up Hogarth Road, which is in Clay County, and entering Palaca on the hard road. Is at that point, we're losing a lot of road. A lot of places are impassable. Uh, just this weekend, uh, log trucks were getting stuck on Hogarth and trying to come up, uh, Barden. It's, it's really a mess. Uh, I got with the sheriff in Clay County, whom I worked with, and the other sheriff, whom I worked with for thirty-three years, but Duval County, I was a policeman there. Uh, it's gonna be a, had to be a joint effort. The, between the logging trucks tearing up the roads, making it impassable for business, like I'll run Hunter's Run Farm. I have Allison Farm right next to me. And big trucks can't get in because its roads are too tore up. Uh, I got with the sheriff from, um, Clay County. I told him it's had to be a joint effort to stop the horrendous road damage. There is a state statute. I enforcement myself for years at Huguenot Park, tearing up public lands. We have many, many four-wheelers. I'm sure I'll get every, on everybody's bad side, huh, but the four-wheelers are really tearing up the roads and having fires every night. Campfires, which is harmless, but they get out there on the four-wheelers, spin donuts, tear up every intersection. So, uh, my business trucks, they can't pass. And they refuse to because the roads are so tore up. And, uh, I think Putnam County, if they would work with Clay County, we could put an end to that because it's been going on way too long. Thirteen years since I've been a resident of, of Putnam County. I guess I'll have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. We have another comment card. Okay. Brenda Chamberlain?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I wanted to bring to your atten, uh...
I need you to give me your address.
Bring to your attention. I'm sorry.
Your address for the record.
Sure. My address is sixty-thirty-one Northeast First Place in Gainesville, Florida. I want to bring to your attention that in the next week, um, two or three different times, we're gonna hit forty or below in temperatures overnight. And as far as I know at this time, there is nothing in the plans for the county for cold night shelter. And that is something that needs to be addressed for the county, not just the city of Palaca, but for the county. And it needs to be addressed with emergency services, uh, excuse me, emergency operations. Uh, there's hurricane shelters. Plans need to be put in place for cold, cold weather also. You have families that sleep in their cars that need this. They need someplace warm to go when it hits, um, below forty. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to turn in a card or speak? Come on, Travis. If you'd give us your address for the record and...
This is Travis Roberts, one-one-zero Yancey Circle, Satsuma, Florida. Um, most of you know I've written an article about the firefighters. It wasn't something I wanted to do or felt I had to do. The, it was something I felt I had to do, okay? There's a big problem when I've got thirty, forty fire depart, firefighters coming to me out of seventy. I didn't go to them. I'm not looking for a story. But it seems to me, how long has this thing been in negotiations? You know, five years now? And, and nothing's gotten settled in five years? I mean, it's up to the board to protect.
You don't, the union contract?
Uh, the union contract, yes, sir.
How old is that?
Yeah, but in all, all fairness, our current administrator's been here two years.
Two years.
Our, our deputy administrator's been here a year and they've been working on it diligently. He just told you what his timeframe was on it. It's not like they're blowing it off and not, it's not a very high priority item. That's the reason why I asked him to do the presentation tonight, Travis, and, and where we'd have accurate information on, real-time information on what has actually happened and what they're trying to get to happen. So it's not like they're blowing it off. Uh, it's just not like that at all.
We got firefighters dropping out, dropping off like flies. Another fourteen have contacted me in the last week.
It's not just firefighters, though, Travis. We can't pay as much as they pay in St. John's County. We just can't do it. And, and, you know, I talked to, uh, to other fire departments from around the area other than just ours, and they're having the same problem we are. They're even having the same problem in St. John's. I wish we could, uh, wave a magic wand and fix that, but the only thing we can do is, is recruit harder. It's very unfortunate, very unfortunate. but the only thing we can do is, is recruit harder. It's very unfortunate, very unfortunate. You can turn that off, Larry Pleaser. I'm taking up his time, so. It's, it's very unfortunate that, very unfortunate that, that we're in the situation that we're in. It's very unfortunate that they didn't get their money, that the county commission gave them the six percent. On top of that, they got a bonus this year. If they haven't received it, they should have. I think they've already received their bonus. It's on top of the six percent that, that they got. So, they would have already been paid, and when they did get paid, under the memorandum for understand, uh, memorandum of understanding, if I understand correctly, they got paid all the way back to October sixth.
That's retroactive.
Didn't just get paid from the date that that memorandum of understanding came through. They paid them all the way back to when every other employee in Putnam County got their money too. So, it's not like we're not trying to do the right thing. We are.
Oh, I think we're all, I think we're all looking for solutions here, but the fact is that some of these people have been there for fifteen years, and they make twelve, twelve eighty an hour. Now, isn't there something you guys can do? I'm sure if you put it before the public for a vote for our firefighters. I, I know everybody in this county, including myself, the few that pay taxes would be able to where it was in a gas tax or MSVU or whatever it is, to get these guys and gals some more money. It's not just the point of the money. When I talk to them, they're overworked. They're dead tired. Some of these guys are putting in eighty, a hundred and twenty hours a week because it's mandatory. Some of them didn't get to go on vacation. Some of them didn't get to spend holidays with their families because of the shortage. I mean, there's, if you look in the article, it shows where there's people that haven't been hiring these positions in eighteen months. I mean, there, there's something that's gotta be done about it. I mean, these, these men and women that are sitting out here, they go out and they rescue. If you're in a wreck or I'm in a wreck, they're the first ones that go there. But I was told two nights ago, when I had a meeting with some of these firefighters, if two fires happen in South Putnam County, and then there's a wreck on top of it, one of them ain't gonna get covered. And that's because of the.
Travis, I think, buddy, I think you're preaching to the choir here. I really do. I mean, if there was anything we could do or any magic wand we could wave, that we could make this happen, but they're not alone. The, the firefighters and the EMT people, as important as they are, they're not alone. Up until we gave this raise, not a single person in Putnam County had had a raise in ten or eleven years.
About ten years.
But whose fault is that? That's you guys' fault to find the solutions to get payment for these people. I mean, that's not us. It's, it's we, the people, that you guys are supposed to be representing, and you didn't just get handed it. It wasn't something that just got laid in you guys' laps. And I'm not bashing you guys. This is something every one of you campaigned for, said you were gonna change. It's been past administrations. I'm not blaming it on this one, but this is an ongoing problem for years and years and years, and it needs to come to a stop. When they're getting twelve eighty an hour, my son stocks groceries at Winn-Dixie and makes that. My other son works at Saint John Shipbuilding. He's home every weekend. What's to stop these men and women? And they're dropping like flies. You got eighty-six in two years, and not one person, and according to the HR paper that I've read, not one person has been on a callback list to find out why you quit. No, there's, there's, that's a big problem. It's just not a matter of negotiating contracts. These are emails right here that haven't been returned. These are phone calls to firefighters. I can start reading them out if you want, but I'm not going to. I'll just publish them, let everybody read them, but that's, there's something wrong here, and I'm not complaining to you guys. I'm here because these men and women asked me to speak on their behalf. That's my job as a writer. And I'm sorry it has to come to this. You know, it, it shouldn't be this way. And, and you gotta have to look at these men and women and tell them, it's twelve dollars and eighty cents an hour. I mean, raise taxes, do something to help these guys and gals out, because if you don't, you're gonna lose them, and it's not gonna be very long. When you lose more people in two years than you actually have room for, seventy-four, but you lost almost a hundred?
If, if I can say something. So, I, I spent eleven hours on the phone this past weekend talking with folks. Firefighters, EMTs, former firefighters, EMTs, parents, um, in two different cases of paramedics. And what I heard was, it's not the money as much as it is the working conditions. Um, I was at Station Twenty-three the other night. I was coming back from Crescent City. Oh, by the way, I'm doing some work. And uh, I stopped at Station Twenty-three, and the pair, one of the paramedics popped a call. They were going on a non-emergency transport to pick a patient up from Putnam Community Hospital and take him to Saint Vincent's Hospital. And the call was for a punctured finger slash seizures. Uh, when I first got elected, uh, there was a discussion about signing a contract with our local hospital and doing non-emergency transport. And my question to Chief from at the time was, isn't this gonna put more pressure on an already overworked system? And he said, no, we have the ninth truck. We can handle the call volume. I think at this point, it would be prudent for us to think about the possibility of issuing certificates of necessity to private ambulance services that can come into the county and handle the non-emergency transport, so we're not wearing out our equipment and our staff, taking people. And, and March isn't here yet, but when that labor and delivery closes, anybody that shows up at Putnam Community Hospital in labor is gonna have to be transported out of county, and that just puts more stress. As I walk in this door, a gentleman asked me if there's an east and west Putnam County. I didn't know what he meant. And then he says, well, you have all the paid firefighters in the south end of the county. There's nothing in the west end. This conversation is going to be massive. It is not gonna be settled tonight. It is not gonna be settled by the words spoken by Mr. Reynolds. I can promise you that. You haven't even reached the tip of the spear. Um, but I, from, from where I sit, and, and for everybody that doesn't know, I, I, I worked as a firefighter paramedic in the city of Palaca. I was a firefighter paramedic for ten years. I know what it feels like to get these BS calls that are non-emergent, and you take that ambulance out of county. I was told about one situation where we had a paramedic that sat with a patient for almost forty-five minutes, waiting for an ambulance to come from Saint John's County because we had three ambulances out of county. This is counterintuitive, and this is what the folks are complaining about, and they're not complaining. They have every right to be raising the issues because these are life safety issues. And the minute that they burn out and they go away, we, the five of us are so responsible under one twenty-five to provide fire rescue. I'm ready to put the uniform back on. You guys got a lot of training to go through, and you're not gonna like it, so. And I can tell you right now, ain't nobody sitting up here could dump the dumb, hump the dumb end of a fire hose in the condition that we're in, the age that we are. We're not physically agile enough to do it. It, it, it really is a younger person's sport. And, you know, I, I see volunteer firefighters out there, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from volunteers. We have got to come up with a holistic solution that takes care of a fire service, um, that brings everybody together, um, including the pay. And I'm, I'm glad you mentioned increasing revenue, um, because if we don't increase revenue, we don't have any way to fund it. We are stretched so thin right now. We're having to cancel a road project to fix a bridge, but that's not the only bridge problem that we have. And, and like, like Mr. Turner said, public works, tho- those folks deserve the same respect. Every employee in the county, um, should be able to come to work here and know that they can serve, if they choose to, a full career here. Dedicate their life, dedicate their time away from their families, so they can serve the public, and, and, and be compensated and treated fairly. So, um, I, I read everything you wrote. I didn't agree with all of it, but I agree with most of it. And I can tell you, if I was sitting in their boots, I would, I wouldn't be as calm as you are right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Roll. Uh, thank you, Travis.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for your service. I, I think you guys ought to give these guys and gals a round of applause because they're, they're the ones that count.
Is there anybody else that would like to submit a card or speak? Uh, Ms. Masters is next, and then I'll go to you, sir, right here. Or Ms. Drackett is next, and then I'll go to you.
Rhonda Masters Drackett, five six seven Federal Point Road, East Palatka. I'm here tonight talking to you as a widow. On October twenty-first, my husband suffered a massive heart attack. I dialed nine one one. Law enforcement was the first to arrive. Thank God they had a budget that allowed them to have some lifesaving equipment. EMS, who I have great respect for, was lost and was delayed getting to my home. I don't know if it would have made a difference in the case of my husband. I don't know the reason for the delay. At this point, it doesn't matter. It wouldn't bring my husband back. I don't wanna see this happen to any other citizen in this county. I don't wanna hear excuses about how other counties have like problems. We're not another county. I wanna see the respect given and the attention paid to finding a solution. It's a multifaceted problem we have in this county. It is not one problem. It's many. It's not necessarily the money. It's the equipment. It's the services. It's the respect. It is the, the leadership ability. It is so many things that can't be fixed with money, although money would fix a lot. Please, create some sort of a special task force. One that can ask for people who we've just seen another tonight, who has some talent in this county, who can bring solutions that we don't know exist yet. Let's reach out to other counties around us. Let's reach out to the union. Let's sit people down at a round table, and let's have a blue ribbon committee. Let's find temporary fixes until we can find a long-term solution. Even if those solutions include a fix, at least we're moving forward in the right direction and not asking existing staff who is already overburdened and overworked to find solutions. Let's look outside the box. Let's look to other communities. Let's ask for support. Let's tell our crisis, and let's ask people to help. Please, we don't want this happening to anyone else. We need a solution, and we need it fast. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Drackett. Yes, sir, did you want to? If you would kindly give us your name and address for the record, please.
George Buzzard, eight ninety South County Road, twenty-one Hawthorne, Florida. I've got another bridge situation for you folks. I've talked to one of your members about it. I've never heard nothing on it, and I'd like some answers or, whether you can give me a question on it. I don't know. Before I moved to Hawthorne, this area, I was a trucker, and I used to pick up loads off of Kiuka Road, forty-eight thousand pound loads, and we were not allowed to go over twenty-one South because of a, a light load bridge namely on twenty-one South on, uh, between Orange Springs and, uh, between Marion County and Orange Springs. And all of a sudden, a year or so ago, this bridge was rated at twenty-eight thousand pounds. That's the reason we couldn't go across it. All of a sudden, a year or so ago, a millionaire moved in our area, and we became a, uh, almost a four-lane road on the bridge. The bridge, the bridge sign, twenty-eight thousand pound limit, was taken off the bridge. Meanwhile, we have trucks coming over the bridge, forty-eight thousand pounds and more, without the bridge being rated. I'd like to know why and how this sign was taken off illegally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buzzard. Anybody else that would like to speak? All right, guys, I'm gonna ask that y'all fill out a blue card. I don't mind one or two of you deciding to speak at the end, but if you'd please, it really helps us with the record and whatever. Larry, come on, come on up, Larry. And then I'll get you next, sir, after that. Are you out of blue cards in the back?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Mr. Turner, I appreciate it. My name's Larry Masters, one fifty Riverside Drive, San Mateo, Florida, three two one eight seven. I, I visit a lot of firehouses too. Not only, not only they're underpaid, law enforcement's underpaid also. And I know we're officially restrained in the county. Um, and one of the things I was talking to the firemen about is that their equipment, is that some of the roads, they cannot get down the roads because their equipment's just too big and too heavy. And a lot of the volunteers, I think it'd be more volunteers, if some of the restrictions were taken away for their training and do some in-house training. I don't know if that's possible or not, but that's one of the complaints that I hear mostly is that the training is killing them because they're volunteers. And so, I believe we, you know, if we create more of a volunteer force along with the paid, uh, firefighters, we could help alleviate some of the, the problems we have with the, uh, you know, getting to the, to the calls. And I love, um, Commissioner Jeff Roll's idea about, uh, about the ambulance, uh, outside ambulance, uh, force because, you know, upstate New York, they did it a lot. They had, uh, the, um, outside ambulances. They're, they're paid. They're, they're, they're civilians. But for non-emergency, uh, you know, calls, stuff like that, they, they took care of them all the time, and it really worked out quite well. Sometimes you might get a, a bill for it, but, uh, it's well worth it. But I, I think, you know, it's, um, if we could put our heads together and come up with solutions to these problems, we could do it. We're a strong community. We're Putnam Strong. You know, I believe in this county. I believe we could do it and, and, and take care of our law enforcement and our firefighters because, uh, to me, that's what the commissioners are here for, for public safety, number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Masters. Uh, I think, help me out here. The training that's required for volunteers is required by the state, correct? It's not required by the county. I mean.
The county pays.
Yeah, well, part of it, yeah. Okay, um, next is Keith Grimes.
My name is Keith Grimes. I live at thirteen twenty County Road, three oh nine Crescent City, Florida, but actually, I live in Georgetown. And yes, Jeff, we, me and you know each other for a long time. We've been playing the same, uh, things as firefighters. I joined the fire department in Georgetown in nineteen sixty-nine.
Wow.
That's a long time. And I wanna say this. This board is not the issue that we have at hand. Money's not gonna fix the problem. It's gonna help it, but it's not gonna fix it. We gotta figure out a way to retain the people that we have. If we don't figure out a way to retain them, whether it be money, yeah, money's great for everybody. Everybody loves to make money. I don't care who you are, what your job is, everybody always wants more money. Yes, that'll help with these peop- these younger people pay their bills. If they can't make their bills, they're going somewhere else. When I can drive to Saint John's County and work for four thousand dollars more a year to start, does Putnam County have the tax roll for that? No, we don't. So, we gotta have some kind of incentive to keep these young people here, whether it's reduction in their insurance cost, whatever. I don't have a person that works for Putnam County regardless of what role you're in. If you look at what you pay for insurance costs versus what I pay at the paper mill, percentage-wise, they're paying a lot more for theirs than I am mine. And I guarantee you, I make as much as most of them. Probably, I probably make more than the, the chief of the department does. It don't hurt me financially as much as it does them. There's a lot of ways a board can look at things that could help these firefighters, and it's not always the dollar that you put out, you know, the dollar you have to write in your paycheck. That'll increase their paychecks if we can figure out a way to come, to bring their, the cost, their cost of living in line with everybody else. That's all they want. They want just a cost of living increase. But the problems that we're having in the fire service, when I joined the department in nineteen sixty-nine, we had the same problems in, and we still got them today. And it all boils down to one thing. What we gonna do to fix it? Nobody, everybody's always got a problem, but they don't ever come to y'all with a solution. So, as a group, as we could work together and satisfy them. You know, I'm, I'm at the end, I'm at the end of this one, like, just like he said a while ago, this is a young man's game. Well, I'm not a young man anymore. And it ain't gonna be too long. I'm gonna quit, I'm gonna tell you. Because when I retire, I'm gonna retire. I'm gonna do just like some other fellas in the fire service did when they retired from their jobs. They quit being firemen. But we got these young people. Yes, I've heard, I heard the comment a few minutes ago, all the paid firemen are in the south end of the county. Why is that? I guarantee you, these people back here can tell you why that is, because the board has tried, commissioners tried to keep a few people happy. Instead of this board coming up here and doing, oh, I guess I gotta quit now.
No, go ahead.
Instead of this board coming up here and saying, okay, the board of county commissioner has a responsibility to furnish fire service in this county. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, why do we let people tell us what to do as far as how we man our fire departments in this county? You know, you're gonna hurt somebody's feelings, but you know what? This ain't about feelings. This is about people's safety. This is about life safety. If we need people in the western end of the county, put them there. Rowal said.
There you go. Go ahead and say it.
You know, let, let's go ahead and just say, this is what's gonna happen. I know you sat up here and you listened to this stuff a couple of years ago. You got tired of hearing it.
I'm not tired of it.
I'm talking about as far as what was going on back two years ago. What's changed? What's changed in the last two years, Commissioner Harvey? Nothing. It's still the same thing it was two years ago. Nothing, it's still the same thing it was two years ago. Whenever we had the same issue about fire service two years ago, we haven't come up with a real solution about that yet. You know, and that's what I'm talking about, but as far as whether it's this person's fault or that's person's fault, it's no individual's person's fault, okay? Yeah, is there some leadership classes could be taught? You better believe it. My daughter makes her living teaching leadership, but she ain't coming to Putnam County to teach it, I can tell you, because she works for the United States Navy. And the Navy, the military, that's all they do, is they teach leadership to their leaders. So maybe, you know, we might look at some, having some leadership classes taught in Putnam County. As to what you need to do to move forward whenever you, you hear people complain, well, he won't answer my email, this one won't answer my email, the county commissioner won't answer his phone. No matter what you're talking about, it just depends on who you're talking about that day. You know what I'm saying? And we got, we got to somehow figure out how we're gonna get, and the only way we're gonna do that is we're gonna have to increase people's education of what your role actually is as a leader in an organization, no matter what it is. Whether you be the county commissioner or if you be the chief of the fire service of Putnam County, you know, it don't matter what it is, you have to show leadership. And sometimes people don't really know what leadership is unless you, unless they get instructed on how to do it the correct way. So that's what I'm talking, yeah, the answer, is the answer always dollars? No, it's not. Do these people need more dollars to be able to support their families? Yes, they do. I'll be the first one to tell you, yes, they do. But is that gonna solve all the problems? No, it's not. So we gotta open that, like that lady said a while ago, we gotta have some dialogue that's gonna open it. Thank you.
Clu Conright, Conrad, Clu and Wright. Bring your bodyguard, will you?
Yeah, I gotta have one.
Will you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Clu Wright, fifteen eighteen, Eagle Bowl, fifteen eighteen, Palaca, Florida. Uh, I am the union president for the Putnam County Fire Rescue Professionals and local thirty-five twenty-nine. Uh, it's the union's intent of this presentation to discuss certain issues and safety concerns within the Putnam County Fire Rescues. A lot of people's touched on different issues and I'm, I'm gonna go over some of them issues in probably a little bit more detail. And I want y'all to know, this is not us and it's not against you. This is the concern of our members and our bodies and they have directed me as a president and a vice president to share these concerns with you that's happening within our organizations. There are about five issues that need to be addressed that is causing what I call and what the union body calls a category five storm. And you can prepare for that storm, but this storm has been brewing and brewing with no preparedness. So what storm, you might ask. We touched a little bit of it, and pay. Pay is not everything, you're right, pay is not everything in there, but you need pay parity. You need retention of employees. The mandatory overtime is at an all-time high. Interfacility transfers and morale. There's a mass exodus of employees leaving. Why is that? Employees feel there's no value, there's low pay, there's no retention, the mandatory overtime, there's no vision, there's no plan, there's no incentivized plan, there's no response on letters, emails or phone calls, lack of vehicle maintenance, on hundreds of thousands of dollars of vehicles that y'all purchased. Constant out-of-county interfacility transfers, which takes our ambulances outside of the county for two to three hours, leaving districts uncovered. Our EMS and fire apparatuses are not being maintained as they should, oil changes are being neglected. Maintenance is almost null, null and void. We have new rescue units that had not have oil changes in twenty or thirty, forty thousand miles. You have paid thousands of dollars for these and whoever's in charge of this should be held accountable because that's a substandard service. And we're concerned about that. As of this date, mandatory overtime has reached eight thousand one hundred point seventy-five hours at the end of December. Voluntary overtime is eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty-one hours. And the regular hours for all employees combined is a hundred and eighty-four thousand. So that puts you probably about a four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars in overtime that you're paying out in overtime, voluntary and mandatory.
Mr. Wright, just point of clarification, you said eighteen thousand voluntary versus eight thousand mandatory?
Yes.
Okay.
This amount of mandatory and voluntary overtime should concern you. If not, shame on you. Shame on you. The body and unions at a point where they have a lack of confidence in any person or person making a decision on the pay parity, parity, the constant turnover, the mandatory overtime, the lack of time off because no one is, is allowed to be in taking vacation time. From January two thousand nineteen until present, we have lost approximately forty people, leaving for other fire departments and other emergency services. Since two thousand fifteen, that's approximately one hundred and fifty people since two thousand fifteen. When you have CNAs, garbage employees and secretaries and people at fast food restaurants making more per hour than a paramedic, firefighter, paramedic or the EMT, that's a problem. We're not saying that we're better than anyone, but we will say we do have specialized skills that are in training, that's a selective job that saves the lives of our citizens and that are on call twenty-four hours a day. But ten a lot, ten dollars, eleven dollars an hour is ridiculous. Paramedics are trained and work off of protocols that are advanced lifesaving skills. Nurses cannot even do what we do and they make thousands of dollars more. We're not asking to be rich, we're asking to make a decent wage to support our families. When you have signs of a toxic organization that includes low morale, high turnover, general data dissatisfaction, failure to accomplish tasks, low morale, no feedback, constant grievances, the department is self-for-failure and along with the employees and leadership and administration roles will fail. In two thousand eighteen, a Palaca Daily News wrote an article.
Clu, are you about to get there?
I can like talk really, really fast.
Well, I do wanna, I wanna hear it too, but, uh, you know, fair is fair here. We only allowed three men, I'm not trying to cut him off.
But in two thousand eighteen, a Palaca Daily News wrote an article, sir.
I just said, I'm not cutting you off, I'm just trying to get you there.
Yeah, I can talk faster, but hey, I was told to slow down. But the county's response having open paramedic and EMT positions is not a Putnam County issue. It is an issue, it was an issue and it's still an issue. I would say you have no bigger advocate than me as a union president to succeed in establishing a fire rescue division within Putnam County. As a union president, president, it is my mission to assist, to assist each and every one of you in the aspect to success. I know what it's like to be on the union side and the management side when dealing with such issues. I'm very passionate about all issues affecting all of us, to the minor, to the major. I want nothing best for Putnam County Fire Rescue to be nothing but the best in the state of Florida. But there seems to be some kind of conflict and if I for one would rather avoid that conflict. Conflicts do arise and I, I also believe people can disagree and come away with an understanding of respect and disagreement. The union has written numerous letters and sent numerous emails to address these issues over the last couple of years. We do not wish to file grievances when such issues can be handled by simple conversations or contacting the union over such issues. When I feel do, when I feel conflicts do arise, resolution should begin immediately between the chief, the county administrator and the union. And I believe good, honest communication keeps open dialogue and avoids conflict and builds trust between all those involved. But I can say now that communication has gotten better and I appreciate that, thank you all. Management, which includes fire chief, county administrator and anybody outside of that rank and file in the union, need a positive relationship built on trust, mutual respect, which will allow the organizations to meet and achieve goals. And I believe there's no problem too difficult for us to handle. The relationship between management and the workforce impacts everything the organization does, everything. This involves responsibility of the jobs, the budgets, the situations which deals with the department. Sometimes conflicts are what improvements emerge from and allows us to come together. Fire departments have a rich culture in working in groups and in teams. And I've been trying to establish several committees that are free and no cost to the county, we talked about that here, which we can resolve these problems and get, and get these problems worked out. I have no happiness in filing any grievance and would rather resolve any issue by talking and coming to an agreement. I've been told that I'm the president, file more grievances in, in, in a year than, than every past president's been here because of the constant violations. I hate that, I don't like to do that. I don't have time to do that and I'm sure they don't have time to be doing that either. So if we can come to a resolution and have these committees and resolve these problems, that'd be, that'd be better for everybody. But there are officers sometimes that are put in positions to interpret the union contract and, and, and policies in a false way. That position needs to be made by the chief of the department with strong current policies in the union contract. The fire chief needs authority to run the department with the correct rank structure. There is no correct rank structure in the fire department. He needs operations chiefs, he needs fire rescue chiefs, EMS chiefs, fire marshals, training chiefs. He cannot do that by himself. We kidding ourselves if he thinks he can stand up there and do that by himself. The members would like to know the mission of the department, the five, ten, fifteen year plan and how we are going to get there and how we're going to get there. Where is the vision of the department now? An effective vision would encourage all of us to succeed within the organization and where we go. And what do we want to become and how we want to accomplish that? If we want to become a fire rescue service and if we are to succeed, a good vision will challenge the status quo and to seek help from all levels, Clu, from the lowest to the highest. A vision of the department is to build a premier fire rescue service through strength and maybe reorganization due to growth or some other needs. Communication is a big key in a vision and allows employees, and I'm almost done, to know the true leader and acceptance when that leader models it. Members want a direction, organization and continuity that changes need to occur, promotes focus and one that creates the desired status. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming tonight, Clu.
Clu. All right, you, so when Mr. Reynolds opened up, he said that, um, and I'm paraphrasing, um, as of tonight or as of recently, um, there's been some, uh, movement forward as far as negotiations. Are you guys, are, do you feel like, and just to simply ask you a question, are you guys able to negotiate with staff? Do you feel like it's a fair, um, where you have equity on both sides of the table? Are you guys getting along? Are you moving the needle forward or are you guys deadlocked?
Let me expand on this a little bit. We've been negotiating since two thousand sixteen. I've been in the fire department over thirty-three years, never, never go to negotiate a contract that, you know, that long.
You've been working the same contract?
Same contract, two thousand sixteen, you know? And I can say, Mr. Suggs ain't been here during that whole time.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Clu, but in fairness, the people you're negotiating with have not been here that long.
That's what I said, he, well, he hasn't been here that whole time.
Stand.
So, uh, but yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's been some ups and downs, you know? And there's been some arguments, there's been, been some disagreements in that. Uh, I wish we can move negotiations on a little, a little faster, you know? Uh, you know, not have it so spread out in time where we can get it done quicker, you know? Uh, I don't like working on a contract for four or five years, you know? Hopefully we can have it done within, you know, four or five months, you know? I would love that.
Are you guys, are y'all settling on, um, articles as you go through signing off and so you don't have to go back and?
Yeah, we're doing TNAs, so tentative agreements and stuff like that, you know?
Okay, okay. All right, and do you feel, are you satisfied with, with the, um, the way the negotiations are going now? The last two years?
I want to be a little, I, I'd rather have it a little bit faster, you know, to, uh, to negotiate a little quicker, you know, stop spreading it out so long to make it last longer, uh, you know, so.
How often y'all meet?
What was the last day we met? December the fifth, you know? So, I mean, sometimes it's been a month, sometimes it's been two months before we get in there and negotiate, you know? So, I mean, officers, you know, they haven't negotiated their contract by one time, you know, it's, it's months ago. So, sooner the better. Get it done.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next would be, um, Nat Gil. Nat, please give us your address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, one oh-five Shady Oak Lane here in Palaca. Nat Gil, I'm a twenty-year employee for Putnam County Fire Rescue. I had the pleasure of working here that long and I, I hope to finish out my career here. First of all, I, I speak for myself. Uh, I feel like Travis represented us as well as he could through his article. I feel that Clu is representing us as the body as well as he can through the union. And, um, I'm not here to bash anybody, I'm not here to bash my chief, I have great respect for my chief. I'm not here to bash the volunteers. I've worked with and underneath their command on fires for years and years and years now and I have great respect for them. Um, I'm not here to discuss any of that truthfully. What I'm here to do is put the, the personal side on what's happening. I had kids about ten years ago and now I cry at sad movies and I can't help but get personal on stuff and that, that's why I'm up here. I, uh, get closer. Normally not a problem for me, so, um, yeah, so, uh, I, I got to talk to Mr. Suggs during one of our last negotiations and I, I brought the story about, um, what, what's happening here, that the turnover rate is a problem for safety reasons, is a problem for, for forty things that you can think of. It, it's an issue for this county, eighty-five people in two years is, is substantial. Um, for me personally, I was put in charge of training three firemen, um, that came on the twenty-four hour engine in Satsuma and I have busted my butt to get these guys where they are. They are incredibly trained personnel, they have exceeded anything that this county could put forward, I'd, I'd put them up against any fireman we got. And my young gun, who is, uh, two and a half years employed here, is out the door. He is hired in St. Johns County and he'll be taking up, uh, that job next month. And for me, that puts a personal side on it because I'm, I'm twenty years, I'm overweight and I'm, I'm looking at getting out of this job within ten years and surviving it and those young men are the future of this place. Um, we have volunteers that are absolutely killing themselves. I, I got to stay awake, um, was it yesterday morning and listen, or was it this morning? Chief, was it this morning y'all had all them fires? Yeah, I, I got to listen to that all night long. I got to listen to station twenty-four out in Melrose bust their butt on a fire in Olajwa County where they had multiple trailers burned down. Then in the middle of that, they had to clear that scene and go straight to another structure fire in our county between station twenty and station twenty-four. And they're, they're working their tails off. It's, it's, it's a never-ending story for the firemen we got here and we are losing people faster than we can get them and dang sure faster than we can train them to be proficient at this job. Our volunteers are, are, are having to work more with the economy the way it is, we, we don't have the people anymore, so this isn't everybody's problem. In, in a, in a solution mindset, it, it's everybody's problem, we all have to come up with solutions. I'm begging you guys, uh, however we can, to put some kind of future forward. Um, my chief has got grayer hair than I've seen him have in, in years and years and years, he's doing the job of twelve men. Um, I know the union has put items forward for negotiations, I know that we have all stood in good faith and, and tried to negotiate and we're moving forward in the right way and I appreciate what Clu has done and I appreciate the, the steps that the current administration has done, uh, especially now, I got my raise this week, I watched it go in my pay finally and, uh, that was a relief, we were glad to get it, uh, first raise in twelve years, eleven years, we were glad to get it. Um, we're not here to fight, uh, but I am here to beg on, on a personal side, please, put whatever effort we can forward into negotiating this contract out, put in some kind of future forward. My young gun that's leaving, he ain't leaving for money. Um, he's leaving for future. There, there's no future here for him is what he feels. You know, his dad made a statement to him, you got a place that won't buy you a badge, why are you staying? You know, the small steps in fire department's gonna make big differences for these young guys and I'm, I'm begging y'all, do something to move this place forward so we can keep some of these young guns that are gonna make this department grow and move, you know? Uh, that's all I got. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Nat. Anybody else would like to speak, have a card? If not, I'll close the public comment. Yeah, you'll have to come up here. It's all right, take your time. Uh, Tammy, if you, when you get up there, would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry, Angie Wright, one fourteen Yancey Circle in Satsuma, Florida. I just wanted to say, I appreciate everything everybody said tonight and I, I want to say I looked into the audience tonight. Four years ago, I was a quadriplegic, I lost my husband and when I looked into the eyes of some of these people tonight, I just wanted to say thank you. I died six times. It was because of these brave young men and women, then when I woke up, their, their eyes were the ones I looked at. They weren't there for the pay, they, their hearts is what I saw when I woke up. And I just wanted to say thank you and if there's anything this committee can do, please, that's all I wanted to say and I just want to give them my greatest, deepest thank yous. So, thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Is anybody else that would like to speak? If not, I'm gonna close the public comment. Have, do you have another issue? Have, do you have another issue, Ms. Olson?
Well, I just would like to hear from the leadership and we would like to hear what some.
Well, at the first of the meeting, Ms. Olson, I think that we, I made it clear that we're not here tonight to debate issues with the audience, we're here to try, take notes and see how we can move forward on some of the issues. I think that it was, um, I think that it was, um, conveyed to you earlier in the meeting that, well, by Commissioner Pickens and by Commissioner Rawls, that, that some of the issues that you're having, you need to take up with the town of Palaca. And ma'am, I'm not gonna debate you tonight, I'm just not gonna, I appreciate it, but I'm not gonna debate you tonight, uh, so I appreciate it. I'm sure Mr. Pickens would be glad to talk with you again if you'd like to, uh, with him being your commissioner. You're, you're welcome, Commissioner Pickens.
I'll be glad, I'll be glad.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna have commissioner comments, uh, it's not on the agenda, but I feel like it's appropriate. We've discussed most of the issues as we've gone through the meeting and we've already done the Barden Bridge update, which was the one thing that I wanted to bring up where we could set the additional meeting, so, um, I'm gonna request that the commissioners also try to keep it as short and sweet as we can where we could get out of here as soon as possible. Commissioner Pickens, would you like to say anything tonight?
Yes, I would. I, um, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. This is a, a very large group and I want to commend, Commissioner Rawls, gonna know he was pushing for nighttime meetings, I believe we've committed to, uh, one town hall meeting per quarter on the first Thursday of, I guess, the first month in the quarter, is that what it's gonna be? Commissioner Turner. And, um, all the issues that were, uh, brought to us, um, none of them were a surprise, not one. Not the Barden Bridge, not your road, not the concerns of the breach of, of the, um, of the dam. Um, and, and we all up here recognize and appreciate the services of the EMS and the firefighters in this community and this county and also law enforcement. And this has been an ongoing struggle. Uh, we've been called just a training ground, uh, for, um, new individuals to start and then go to a, to a, another county. Uh, it's, it's no secret that other county around us are maybe doing a little better than us. Putnam County was really hit hard by the recession and we've taken a little longer to come out of it. But one thing I think that this commission has done is we've listened, we've hired new staff, we have a new county administrator, we have a deputy county administrator, which we'd never have. And he's working on structures to hopefully help, um, positions in this county. Um, and I also think we've done what we could do. Our tax base has gone up a little bit in the last two years. So, have you heard that we were able to give a small raise for the first time in over 10 years? Now, I'm not saying anything about a previous commissioner, I'm just saying that we did act when we had the money. We could not have done that, we could have done something else, but we decided we needed to. And I did speak with somebody today about fire service and Commissioner Rawls, you're correct. The concerns that they had, it wasn't people just leaving for pay, they wanted a career. They wanted to know who they were looking for and they wanted a career path. And I told this individual that as commissioners, we need to make sure that all employees that wish to come to work for the county, whether it's in public works, sanitation, come to the staff here, um, that they have a clear career path, that they can, that they can say, "Hey, I can make a living here, I can move forward, I can move up and I can make a career and live in Putnam County because that's where I choose to, I want to live here." And we are working on that. Government works very, moves very slowly and if, I guarantee you, if you caught each one of us separately before this meeting and said, "What's your biggest frustration with government?", I guarantee you, four out of five of us, not five of us, would have said how slowly it moves. But I truly appreciate everybody that is here tonight and I hope there's more people than the next one that we have. But we appreciate your input, we hear you loudly and we are working on solutions, um, for every situation that y'all brought to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well said, Mr. Pickens, a very, took a lot of words out of my mouth. I do want to address some things, though. During the visiting session, the fire service, we were asked if, if we had, if money wasn't an option, what would we like to do? And fire service really was number one in, in many of the category. And we talked about, because I come from a line of firefighters and it's kind of a two-edged sword. I see the retirement situation and, and I talk to young firemen who go, "I can't wait till I'm 55, I'm gonna retire and get out of there." And, and that happens, we heard it tonight, we heard, "Can't wait for retirement here." But if we don't have that pipeline of the new people coming in and the old, and it's a young man's sport, we heard that, and it's not a sport, it's a career path. It's important that we come up with some ideas and some of it was talked about, if we could do some housing allowances for those new people, if we could do more education with a commitment to work here in Putnam County. So, a lot of this has happened. I'm very excited about the volunteer chiefs getting together and John, appreciate you coming to our workshop and talking to us about the list of things that the volunteer chiefs have. Because in all of our organizations, churches, Rotary, Kiwanis, you name it, volunteerism is, has dropped, people don't have time for it anymore. And we're in a good economy and thank God we're in a good economy, let me say that. But right now, unemployment's 3.6% in Putnam County, okay? Jobs are everywhere, people are begging for workers and I'm sorry that your, your union contracts didn't pay what they should be paying. I wish they would have, I wish that would have been handled years ago, but we're working on it now. And I'm glad to see that y'all ratified that and took the advantage of that pay raise and it was retroactive, wonderful outcome. So, I think when you see that, some good things are gonna happen tonight and a good conversation has happened. I like the ability to transfer people outside using non-emergency, we do that with some of our Baker Act people and, uh, we could easily try to make that happen with, uh, with the non-emergency. I do want to say, the Holloway Road and the bridge thing, Holloway Road was, my former commissioner, Mr. Taylor, had that vision of that area, um, and the vision was not for $6 million out there, but as government, as we heard tonight how it moved so slow over the years with DOT, that number ballooned to $6 million to pave Holloway Road from 100 all the way down, okay, to Tinsley. So, the low-hanging fruit was easy, we had two bridges that need to be repaired and if we can keep some semblance of that bridge, FDOT was willing to move some of that small county rural assistant program money over to help with the bridges. That was a no-brainer. And this in my district and those people were promised a road, but I'm a county commissioner and I have to get at the 50,000-foot level and do what's best for this county. And I will do that every day until the day I'm no longer a commissioner. So, that was a good move on this part because we can fix bridges. And I'm sorry to the people in Barden, we, we thought we had people out there that looked at these bridges after the hurricane, we were told they were fine, only to find out that over the years, a, and you knew the water was coming from Flor home, all that watershed is coming from west of you going out towards Rice Creek, it was blowing that water underneath those bridges out. I'm sorry that's happened, but when we had roads out there where you could have put a school bus in West Bannerville Road and not seen the school bus, there was a lot of water moving around Barden years ago and moving around this whole county. We found wetlands that frankly, we didn't know existed anymore, but the wetlands saying, "We're still here." So, we've got challenges, there's no doubt about it. And I want to refer to something else. I am the executive director of Save Rodman, I'm not a voting member of it and this board does support the saving of Rodman. That's 21 billion gallons of water when that place is full, okay? 21 billion, that's 19 feet above sea level. Now, when we talk watershed, we're talking water coming from Grandin at 119 feet down to Lake Okeechobee, 19 feet. You don't think our lakes drop when that thing's open? Let me assure you, come to my lake, I have a marker in that lake and when that dam is open and that water's rushing out, our lake levels go down. Now, here's the funny, I took Roger Weider, Channel 12 reporter, out there one day and I said, "Roger, I'll drink out of the reservoir or out of the spillway right now if you'll drink off the Jacksonville Landing." He said, "I can't drink that water, we can't." And here's the, here's what rose me raw. You've got people supporting, singing songs on the Tallahassee steps of the Capitol, supporting a reservoir for, for the Everglades, for Lake Okeechobee to clean up the Everglades. Now, I don't know about y'all, I'm 58 years old, just turned 58 a few days ago and, uh, I've heard the Everglades restoration my whole life. We're still throwing tons of money at it and we ain't restored that Everglade. So, you're gonna partially restore this one right here, which means the chicken and the egg go to, the chicken and the pig go to breakfast and the pig gives his life and the chicken makes a donation. That's what's gonna happen. It's about water and years ago when we had the drought, we were looking for water, we were needing water. And believe me, with, with a thousand people a day moving to Florida, it's about water. Don't think it's about anything else, it's about water. So, I, on the record, I support the saving of the, of Lake Okeechobee and that watershed because you know what, we didn't have a single algae bloom out there this year, not a single one. But did we have them in the river? Yes, we did. I, we've given y'all's time, but this is mine. And Mr. Chairman, I am with those remarks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Rawls.
Well, ditto on Rodman. All right, um, so, Commissioner Harvey asked me one time when we were at the EOC Center if I missed being a firefighter and I told him I didn't miss the job, I missed the camaraderie. And I really know what it's like when you put on a uniform and you put your life in the hands of other people and you trust them and you live with them. And typically, a firefighter, paramedic, EMT, um, dedicates one-third of their life away from their family, away from their friends, their kids, their graduations, or anything that you can think of because they're on for one day and they're off for two days. And then they, they work overtime and I just crunched the numbers real quick and based on what Mr. Wright said, if his numbers are correct, they're, they're dedicating an additional 15% of their life, that's 30, that's 48% of their life that we're asking on average of our, of our folks that are firing EMS, um, you know, to, to work in our county. Dedication, loyalty, everything that you need from your, the, uh, the staff to, to serve the public, um, they've obviously got because they're still sticking around doing it. So, I think that we're at a moment in time that demands our action. I think that this is when the public has a, um, a lot of chance to have input and this is a first nighttime meeting that we've had since I've been here, um, in these chambers, whether it's a town hall meeting or a county commission meeting, I would like to see more of these, I would like to see more public input and, and participation from us because at the end of the day, you're the government, we're just the guys that get to vote on it. But you, you are actually the ones that get to fund it and tell us what our, our role in life is. So, uh, thank you for, for, for coming out here tonight, I really do appreciate everybody being here. The fire service is gonna need more revenue, so is public works, parks and recreation, um, general services, all of our, all of our departments are gonna have to have increases in revenue. We need the public to help us with this. I personally would love to see what Ms. Dracket proposed where we have some sort of task force that comes up and is put together to model a new fire rescue service that is inclusive of your volunteers and your paid folks because I don't see us getting out of this problem without people volunteering, period. We're gonna have to be dependent, heavily dependent on volunteers. Um, I personally like to see us recruiting in high schools, um, you know, getting out there and letting, letting young folks know that it, it's okay to, to work as a firefighter, a paramedic, a law enforcement officer, a nurse, a teacher, the, the critically, the critical, um, trades that we need, forget the construction trades that are near and dear to my heart, but we need to get, get out there and, and, um, help these young folks, uh, get in, in, in some sort of direction. But I think if we could get, um, at, at a Veach High School, four or five, uh, people that would, younger people that would come into the volunteer fire service, pay for their training and then put them on a list so when we recruit, we only recruit from within our own volunteer service, um, then I think that would be part of the incentive. Commissioner Harvey talked about, um, the housing incentive. I, I think, you know, if, if we rerate our, our state housing initiative program money and went after some federal home loan grant or Florida Finance Corporation grant money, um, give these folks a $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 down payment assistance. So, where we can't pay you a lot of money in your paycheck if we can reduce the cost of your monthly overhead for your mortgage payment, um, by having less of a debt load on you, then your money goes farther. I think we need to include staff at all levels, um, in, in, in the conversation. Going forward, Putnam County needs to rebuild at, at, in, in all areas. So, I really think that, um, we need as much input from staff as we can. I can promise you that the, the people that are, um, on the street, um, working every day in the, in the ditches and mowing and, um, running fire and rescue, they, they know how, how the system can be fixed. So, we need, we need as much input from them as possible, that's, that's my opinion. And, um, we need to act on this to keep this conversation going. This has been a great conversation, um, you know, it, it's, uh, the, the fact that it took this to get us here, um, whatever it takes, I'm glad we have the conversation going. I, I don't think that we should let this thing die, I think we should, uh, continue this as soon as possible and, uh, work towards a, uh, a fire rescue service for Putnam County and, um, getting more revenue for the rest of our other departments. But thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart for showing up because I, I just knew if I walked in here and this room was empty, it was gonna be like, okay, we're not having nighttime meetings now, so, good start.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Goddard.
Yeah, I want to thank all of you for being here. Um, as I look out here, I realize most of you have contacted me at one time or another, which means you're very much involved with what goes on, so it's, it's just good to see. And I like this open feel, uh, different than our board meetings. Our board meetings, a lot of times, they're bored. They just are what they are, their housekeeping, their, uh, things that you see that comes on our agenda, we've already seen 30 times before that, narrowed it down, we, we know what it is. This is an open dialogue where you can bring your, your, your concerns out here. Like I said, most of you have called on not just this concern, but other concerns over the years. Um, I, I want to bring up, uh, Barden Bridge. So, you came up here with solutions, um, although we've been through, I don't know how many solutions that we thought was a good solution and then it got shot down. But, one thing I commend this board on is looking, uh, that didn't work, we'll try this. Well, that didn't work, we try this. And we, we hash a whole lot in that other little room over there, we see a lot. We, uh, we have conquered our insurance down, that, that was, that was a, a monster here. Several years ago, insurance was just killing us and, uh, we, we, we looked at, again, we took it and we looked at a whole lot of different ways. We actually stepped out on a limb and, and it's so far has been a good thing for us, but we, we did it on faith and it's saving all of the county employees money right now. And in the long term, I think it's gonna save us even more as, as it keeps going. Um, we didn't even touch on two, things that we're trying to do with our landfill, uh, with our, our wastewater, I mean, you, you see a few items in here. We deal with a lot of stuff and a limited amount of money and we're all adamant, we don't want to raise taxes. We're, we're doing everything we can, uh, you're paying enough taxes as it is, we're, we, we want to try and do with what we've got. And, you know, fire, fire rescue, we know is top, we, we see these people all the time. It's the solutions that we're looking for. We, we know problems, uh, we see problems constantly. Solutions is what I'm loving that you guys are bringing in here with ideas that, you know, try this, try that, let's see, uh, what we can do to, to keep that cost down. And, and as I talk to the firefighters, it's not the money. Again, it's, it's a whole lot of other issues that we need to be a part of, some things we can't fix, we just can help it along. And again, the government does move slow. Volunteerism is down, so i- it's not just volunteerism. Volunteerism is an important issue in churches and everything else. It's also employment and I hear this nationwide, I, I'm just dealing with a guy in, in Jacksonville. He hires 20 people and might end up with one. They just don't want a end up with one. They just don't want to work. They come in there, they don't want to do a starting pay. They want the finish pay. I can turn the bolt as good as that guy. I want to get paid for his twenty years, too. And so, that's a problem that they're having to deal with, is the younger people do not want to work. They didn't want to work their way up. And so, it's gonna be something that's gonna hurt our county because we're rural. That's why we live here. And it's, we don't have the influx of people coming and going out of our county. We have local people, and that's good. That's why we live here. We live here for the beauty and the things that we can go see, as they brought up about the river. I go out there constantly. I'm in the forest. I go out there, whether it's drawdown or not drawdown. I see very little difference. I know they do. I see none. I see the same amount of people out there fishing. I see the same birds. I see all the animals that's out there. And I enjoy Putnam County. I've had the pleasure of living elsewhere. As a matter of fact, I'll be real brief here. When I left here, I said I'd never be back. I was wrong. The longer I was away, the more I realized, this is, this is the gem. This is it. And since I've been back here, I have thoroughly enjoyed it. I go everywhere I can in Putnam County. I promote Putnam County. I love Putnam County. We are so fortunate, and we know, we need to constantly remember that. We are very, very fortunate to have this gem. This isn't everywhere. And if you'll take the time to go out and look, you'll go, "Oh, my gosh." What we have here is special. And what we have here is a group of people. That's a community that's special, that wants nothing but the best for this community. And so, again, I'm just gonna commend you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking your time, and thank you for your solutions.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. I'd also like to join with the other commissioners in welcoming everybody here tonight, and I'm glad you came. I look forward to the next town hall, which is scheduled for the first Thursday of the next quarter, April, first Thursday in April, first Thursday in, or the, yeah, the first Thursday in April. Also, I'd like to make one comment to Mr. Hayes about the road between us and Clay. We do have some agreements with Clay to help each other with that road going in and out of there until such time as we can get this new bridge built. We do have an active interlocal agreement with Clay County. So, we're helping each other with a greater sum, and we're doing, doing a kind of a joint venture on those roads, because that road goes in and out of Clay and Putnam. And so, we have got that agreement in place as of this time. There's nothing else to come before the board?
Real quick, the, that's Thursday, the second?
April second.
Okay.
Yep.
We have what?
Yeah, we can either do it April the second. I guess that's another month. The idea of taking the first Thursday of the quarter was that the following Tuesday, we would have a board meeting. And so, and we could handle a lot of these issues, you know, and talk about it in workshop or whatever may come forward. Well, it kind of messed up in this month, because we're gonna have two weeks between, because the first was on a Wednesday. It sounds to me like the first of April's gonna be on a Wednesday, too. Does the board wish to go ahead and have it?
I'd say, yeah, let's, let's, let's walk it in.
Let's just try to keep it there.
First Thursday of each quarter?
Yeah, first Thursday of each quarter.
It's catfish festival week.
On Thursday night?
Well, that takes me a whole week to do my part of cutting swamp cabbage.
I thought you just waved a magic wand at that. All that swamp cabbage just showed up.
I'm looking for that wand, I can tell you.
Okay.
Since the fall, we have our board meeting.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Thursday, April ninth, good.
Yeah.
Gonna move it to the ninth?
Yeah, move it to the ninth.
Six o'clock?
Okay, so, we, I'd like to try to have some kind of a, of a way that somebody can remember when they're gonna be without having to know each particular date. So, can we, can we do it? Well, the second Thursday won't work a lot of times, because if it's after the second Tuesday, then it's after the meeting, and so it's two weeks later. The whole idea is doing it before. So, how about we set the rule that it's going to be the Thursday before the first meeting of the quarter?
There you go.
Good one.
That was a great suggestion. I was just told that in my ear here to suggest that, but you're on top of it, sir.
Minds think alike. Okay, so, April ninth will be the next meeting. With that being said, this meeting's adjourned.